All right. Okay, I'm going to call the order, call to order the Lincoln City City Council meeting of Monday, August 10th at 6:00 PM. And if we could do a roll call, Mr. Twig. You're muted, but, oh, there you go. Yes?
Yeah. Oh, I'm here too.
I am here.
It's here.
All right. We're going to suspend the pledge of allegiance because we're on Zoom and it doesn't sound very good when we're all not in unison. So let's go right to the consent agenda and we have the minutes of the regular meeting, July 27, 2020. And I understand Mr. Twig made some changes as earlier noted. Yes, Counselor Hinton?
My move to approve the consent agenda, which includes the regular meeting minutes of July 27, 2020 with changes noted.
Second by Counselor Casper, thank you. And all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? Here are none. All right, thank you very much. We have public comments at this point, and before we go to that, Mr. Chandler, are you going to summarize any comments that have come in since the last meeting? Was that the plan or?
It is, Mayor. I have three that have come in. I can summarize them or I can read them, but I planned on summarizing them. You have received two of those. The other one I received at 5:52 and I just sent that to David and a copy to you. But I, like I said, I can summarize all three of them if you'd like.
Okay. Well, we have a, I have a, we have a guest waiting in the wings that wanted to do a comment personally, if we could go to her first. But I would like to remind the public that we do take public comments still, even though we're doing my Zoom, and you just have to put it to publiccomments@lincolncity.org or you can actually come into the, physically into the chamber and there's a computer set up there as well. So with that, Rebecca, we have you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me tonight.
Would you introduce yourself and who you're with and?
I will. I'm Rebecca McPhee-Wilson. I am the Lincoln Community Health Center Director. Lincoln Community Health Center is part of Health and Human Services and is part of, under Lincoln County, and we have the Board of Commissioners and our Lincoln Community Council oversee the health center services.
And go ahead and you can just tell us what you wanted us to hear tonight and the public at large.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. I'm here tonight to recognize and celebrate Health Center Week. Even though we're not able to be there together in person, I'm happy that we can honor and celebrate the valuable services that health centers provide nationally as well as locally at our, at our own Lincoln Community Health Center. Health Centers came into existence in 1965 and we've been celebrating how these health centers help communities and individuals overcome barriers to care such as not enough providers, you know, not enough resources, not enough income, not, you know, inadequate insurance or no insurance. This year, the health center theme is lighting the way for healthier communities today and in the future and is represented by a lighthouse. And Lincoln Community Health Center is wholeheartedly endorsing that theme since the beginning. Fourteen years ago, when we started, we, we have used the lighthouse and the, been lighting the way to good health to represent the care that we provide. I'm not sure if everyone understands, but Lincoln Community Health Center provides acute and critical medical care. We provide preventative care. We provide reproductive health. We provide maternal child health and a full range of behavioral health services for all ages, adults, children and families. And we have eight sites in Lincoln County in the four cities, Newport, Lincoln City, Toledo and Walport, and we have sites at our four high schools, and those are called school-based healthcare centers. And provide community services in, you know, with, with our case managers and care coordinators. Last year, Lincoln Community Health Center saw a total of 5,095 individuals, which is around 11 or 12% of the county. Twenty-five thousand of these visits occurred in the clinic and our behavioral health, our primary care, and an additional 5,000 were provided by case managers and care coordinators in the community. And so together, we provided 30,343 visits in the county. Now, in Lincoln City, we have two sites. We have one located at the north part of the town at 4422 Devil's Lake Boulevard, and that's, we're in the same building as the DMV. And the other site is at the school-based healthcare center at Taft High School. And we're fortunate in Lincoln City that both of our sites are integrated, and that means that we can provide both primary care and behavioral health at the same clinic. So it's, you know, one, so to speak. In Lincoln City, we have a number of really well-trained providers. We have physicians, family nurse practitioners, psych nurse practitioners, nurses, counselors and other disciplines that are specialized training. And since you are the Lincoln City Council, I thought you would like to hear the number of individuals and visits we had in Lincoln City last year. At our Devil's Boulevard site in primary care, we saw 617 individuals. And in behavioral health, we saw 484 individuals, and we're approximately down for 7,000 visits. At Taft, in primary care, we saw 84 different students, and in behavioral health, we saw 91, for a total of around 872 visits during the year. We also provide maternal child healthcare in Lincoln City and the surrounding communities. I wasn't able to drill down specifically for Lincoln City, but we did in the county serve 375 expectant mothers for a total of 22,000, I mean, 2,200 visits. I want to highlight that, you know, the health center is not the only facility at that location. We also have other Health and Human Services, public health is there, we have, we have a number of other services. But I would like to say that during the last six months of the pandemic, we've really seen how brightly our staff can shine. When the stay-at-home worker came through, within a week, we were able to transform the services that we were providing in person to telehealth, telephone, virtual platforms so that we could continue to provide that really valuable healthcare. And that was due to the innovation, commitment and dedication of our staff. So I'm here to tell you that we're still here. We're still providing services to everyone. Some of it is on the telephone, some of it's virtual, but some of it's still in person. And we're providing individual group and family therapy in both the adult and child and family programs, behavioral health. And in primary care, we have a mix of in-person and virtual visits and where we've made sure that we are able to distance, you know, the times that people come into the clinic so that we can make sure that people do not have too much close contact and we can, of course, disinfect the spaces in between. One thing in closing, I would like urge, urge people that are listening is to remember that it's really important in these times to take care of your physical and mental health. And these are really challenging times, and some people are afraid to, you know, call and they don't know if they would want to come in for an in-person visit, but I just want to let people know that we are here and we look with you. You know, if we think that in-person is best, we can provide that and do all of the, you know, the various, or if you, if you want to do it telephone or virtual platforms, we can provide that too. We want to make it work and make sure people are getting the healthcare they need.
Well, that's good. Could you share with us, I assume there's a number, a phone number that people would call in to kind of make arrangements? Is that?
Yes. Yes, well, we have two. For behavioral health, you would call 541-265-4196. And for primary care, it's 541-254947.
Great. And I assume those are both under the county, county health numbers?
Yes.
Great. Is there any, any questions from council for Rebecca? Because it's, it's always great to have you and reinforce, you know, some of the services that you not only have in the county, but actually have a place up here in Lincoln City.
Absolutely. And you have, you know, we have all the same services in Lincoln City as we do in Newport, and, you know, we provide crisis services to folks in the community. We provide a lot of services and they're still happening, so.
Great. All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate your time and, you know, sharing with the public.
Thank you for having me. Happy to be.
Thanks, Rebecca. Ron, if you would then summarize our earlier comments or comments from public?
Yes, the, as, as mentioned, these have been sent to David to be entered into the record, and the council has received copies of each of these. The first one came from Jerry and Marilyn Newton, in which they are expressing their opposition to the mandatory 96-gallon compost service and that they are requesting more, they're saying it is a government overreach and, and requesting an opt-out provision for that service. The next one came from Janet Neip, who is the REIA president. This pertains to one of our agenda items, and that is the parking. And she wrote about the parking difficulties that are up in Rhodes End. Specifically, she wrote about the weekend traffic and parking along Logan Road, specifically across from the Rhodes End Park, the cars are parked to close. There is parking that is being, that is taking place throughout the Rhodes End area as people are trying to go to the thumb or to the knoll, and that begins very early in the morning. There is high traffic, noise, speed, lack of sidewalk making it dangerous as cars speed by pedestrians. There's pressure on the city to install more speed limit signage. No visitor parking are allowed in our residential neighborhoods. We work with the state to expand existing parking lots and the state lots and convert city-owned property to parking lots. And they are seeing cars parked up on Neptune between 66th and 74th late into the evening with people sleeping in, in several of the cars. The third one came just a few minutes ago from Marcy Baker, who wrote concerning the economic relief program. She writes that she's attempted to give free tickets for promotion for upcoming events to begin fulfilling the contract, the economic relief aid contract, and has been informed that they do not have permission from the third floor to do anything related to tourism at this time. She is asking that we allow Exploring Lincoln City to begin collecting on these contracts, assuming the business owner is able to do the offering, and it will not result in more people coming to the coast. She also asked that have code enforcement or the police department look into the drive lanes and the number of vehicles that are overflowing into the public streets.
All right. Mr. Twig, is there anyone in the chambers that wanted to make comment?
No, Mayor, there's nobody, nobody here, just Counselor Parsons and I.
All right, thank you very much. And then moving on then to our next agenda item, Mr. Chandler, did you want to introduce our new employee?
I do. We have down in, in my, on the lower left corner, I don't know where his face sits on your screens, but Dave Madison is our new senior planner. He's been on board for about 10 days, I think now, and is adapting well, fielding lots of questions and acting like an expert. He comes to us, he was the planner for Tillamook for 17 years, and over the last three years, he has operated his own business where he has been a consultant with several communities throughout the coastal area. So Dave, do you want to take just a moment and introduce yourself?
You're on, you're on mute, Dave.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dave Madison. Yeah, just, I started in Oregon in, well, I mean, I can, day back to 98 when I started in Yewa-Tilla County, came out to the coast in 2000, started working with the city of Tillamook, worked on a lot of stuff, updating our codes, updating our comp plan a couple times, kind of wrapping up a periodic review that was eight years overdue when I first got there, working with a lot of planning commission and a lot of training, training programs with them and then, but just, and then for the last year and a half, I worked for the city of Yahats, and just helping them update their codes as well and, and work on some grants and some comp plan work and just taking applications through the process.
That's great. That's excellent. Now, I, I want to make sure that I'm not going to get in trouble when I meet with the mayors of other Lincoln County cities where you've been working, because they know one way of you.
Yahats was the only area in Lincoln County I worked, I've worked in. I mainly focused around the Tillamook area, Garibaldi, Manzanita, Wheeler and those communities, and then working with just applicants on big projects that they had.
All right. Thank you. Well, welcome. I, I don't know what your commute is, but Zoom works pretty well, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a lovely commute coming down there when I do and working, you know, with Richard and James, those are the, the only two planning, planners I've met yet. Of course, I know Richard and I have kind of tied things together. I think he's on here somewhere, but we've kind of worked a few things when gathering information for a parks plan with the city of Tillamook and then there are a lot of coastal planners meetings, just updating each other on things.
Oh, that's great. Pleased to have you with us and thank you for, for joining and introducing yourself tonight.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's move on. We've got, who do we have? We have a economic development report on the RARE, and that must be, oh, yep, Allison and Jody.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're excited here to provide a brief update on Jody Messer's service year. So I'll just provide a little bit of background and then turn it over to Jody to summarize the work that she's done in the last 11 months being here with us. So Resource Assistance for Rural Environments, otherwise known as RARE, is an AmeriCorps program administered through the University, University of Oregon's Institute for Policy Research and Engagement. And each participating community provides about $23,500 toward the stipend for these AmeriCorps or RARE participants. And this is the second time that the city has used the RARE program. The first time was with Alexandra Roberts Bullock was our, our RARE person. That was 2007 and 2008, and she was brought on to help us plan the Cutler City Community Vision Shiret process. And that, I think, went very well. And, and now we've had Jody here. So I think it's been a really great tool for us when we have had a, kind of a temporary spike in workload, and it's a wonderful two-way street to have someone get a lot of exposure to different parts of professional life. And, and so, yeah, anyway, there's an attachment in the staff report that covers the projects that Jody's worked on, and, and so she'll go ahead and speak to those. I want to also just let you all know that she is going to continue with us on a part-time basis while she is going to grad school at Portland State University. So hence the big smile on my face. So we're really excited for her to go back to grad school, but I'm even more selfishly excited that she's going to stay on here for a little bit longer.
Great. All right.
Thanks, Allison. I'm also very excited, so happy day for, for us today. And as Allison said, there's the attached staff report goes through details of each of the projects that were part of my term of service, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but I'll move through them briefly for now. So I had four main projects that I worked on in the RARE participant room, and the first, as you know, is the Economic Development Toolbox. So the main goal there was to expand the existing tools and create new program criteria for new economic development tools for both the city and the Urban Renewal Agency Economic Development Toolbox. Another project was the Underutilized Property Survey, and the main goal there was to identify underutilized properties and potential brownfield properties and begin outreach with property owners. And you'll actually be hearing a presentation later this evening on that agenda item. Another project was Historic Preservation, and that was really taking a look at the city's historic preservation efforts, including the possibility of becoming a certified local government to increase funding available. And then lastly, the, another big project was working on the formation of a new urban renewal plan. And again, that is coming up on the agenda later this evening as well. Another portion of my term of service were several trainings and conferences that I was able to attend, both through the RARE program and through other partner organizations. So overall, I really enjoyed my term of service and I'm really grateful that I was able to serve in this role, and I'm really excited I get to stay on longer in a part-time role. And I, I view the RARE AmeriCorps program in general as a really great resource, not only for participants such as myself, but also for the community partners. Yeah, so happy to answer any questions you have, and if no questions, thanks for your time.
Well, let me, let me, the council say, we certainly appreciate you joining us, and we know we put Allison in a, a big workload early on, so it was great that you could assist in that endeavor, and it moved us way ahead, a lot faster, and most appreciative. And hopefully it gave you the kind of background and training and exposure that you, you desired anyway, and it was certainly a good fit for us. I hope it was for you.
Yes.
I guess the only disappointment I would have, and I hate to end on a sour note, but, you know, you forgot to bring money with you for those toolkit things. I thought some, some grant, some vault combination, something would have been buried, you would have found it. We'll work on it.
We'll work on it, yes.
Any comments from councilors or Counselor Hinton?
I just wanted to say that on behalf of the urban renewal, I'm really excited that you were here to help us get over that hump. And also, I'm interested in what you'll be working on, maybe some of those grants that the mayor was talking about.
Yeah, so it'll be an extension of kind of tying up the, the Economic Development Toolbox, and then the Underutilized Property Survey, there's some proposed next steps for that, and that'll also tie in with the toolbox and exploring funding opportunities for potential brownfields. And then we have the Year 2000 Development Plan Urban Renewal Area that will be sunsetting coming up soon, and we're not quite sure what that entails because that happens once every 27 to 30 years, so that'll be exciting.
All right. Well, thank you, and we're, we are pleased that you'll be staying in our, our world and working with us, so appreciate that. If we could move on then to the Economic Development Underutilized Property Survey that you thought about.
Yes, and we do have a consulting team there, I think in the waiting room. I don't know if they can, oh, there they are. Awesome. So a bit of background on this project, the city council has increased economic development efforts by making available a toolbox similar to the Urban Renewal Agency. One of these concept tools is a brownfield assistance tool to provide redevelopment assistance to properties considered to be underutilized or to have brownfield issues. And some definitions that may be helpful for use in this context. The properties considered to be underutilized are those where the assessed value of the land is twice or more than the assessed value of the improvements or structures on that land. And then properties considered to be brownfield are those with actual or perceived contamination based on lack of development on that property. So in order to understand how to effectively assist property owners with these underutilization or brownfield issues, staff identified a need to conduct an underutilized property survey to identify those sites and begin outreach with property owners. In April of 2020, the city of Lincoln City was awarded a $25,000 Brownfields Redevelopment Fund Integrated Planning Grant through Business Oregon and to complete the survey work. So staff issued a call for bids seeking consultants for this work and awarded a bid to Mall Foster and Alangi. And we have our consultant team here with us tonight to give a presentation to council on the project methodology, results, and then we can discuss next steps. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to our consultant team. And I think Jen has a PowerPoint she's going to pull up.
Here we go. Can everybody see my screen? Okay.
Hey. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Jody, for the introduction. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us virtually this evening. We're happy to be here. My name is Seth Otto. I'm a senior planner and project manager with the consulting firm Mall Foster-Alangi. We're a multidisciplinary firm based in Portland. We work in the environmental, planning, civil engineering world, and also provide very extensive data management and GIS services to local municipalities around Oregon. We have just a few minutes with you tonight, so going to move quickly through a presentation and try to leave a lot of time for question and answer. Just next slide, please. So we'll introduce ourselves, the work that we completed, what we did and when we did it. We'll get into the methodology of how we completed the inventory and the application of that inventory here in Lincoln City, and then briefly cover summary results. Next slide. So I'll introduce myself and then I'm joined by two colleagues also from MFA, Sabrina and Jennifer. They'll introduce themselves. You know, everyone from Lincoln City who worked on this project. It was a great integration of our consulting team with city staff, and I think we got a great result from that. So just again, by way of introduction, my name is Seth, background in land use planning, and now heading up our brownfield and land use planning services for MFA, Mall Foster-Alangi. Sabrina?
My name is Sabrina Turner, and I've been with MFA for about one year as a senior GIS analyst. My background is primarily in geospatial analysis, data management and visualization.
And I'm Jennifer Elstrat. I've been with Mall Foster-Alangi for about two years. I've worked on brownfields inventories before, primarily on the data and visualization side. of things.
Great. Next slide. So as Jody mentioned in her introduction, MFA was engaged this year in order to complete an inventory of underutilized properties in Lincoln City. And we worked with staff to define what underutilized meant, the purposes of the study. But really, the inventory is intended to create a database, a base of knowledge about the real estate and real property conditions within Lincoln City that provide opportunities and constraints to achieving economic development goals. Inventory identified properties within key commercial corridors as well as industrial zone properties to help the city provide land available for both retail and office uses as well as employment within the city. The broader objectives that were defined for the for the toolbox, as Jody's called it, really are to help property owners and key stakeholders in Lincoln City get linked up with resources that are available to help properties that are not achieving their full potential. And part of that is understanding underlying conditions on those properties that may be negatively impacting their full beneficial use. And that's really what we're trying to start here with. The inventory is generated database of properties and understand a little bit about those properties and what their needs might be, and then do some initial outreach to property owners to start that dialogue of potentially partnering around addressing issues, constraints, and again, helping them achieve their potential. Next slide. So we kicked off the project in April and spent about a month gathering data, working with city, county, state, and other agencies to get all of the geospatial data in place and into a geodatabase. Then we worked with, again, with city staff to refine layers to generate some new data. We'll hear about that in a few minutes. And then, once we really narrowed down our focus on the types of properties that city's really primarily interested in, there was a little bit of initial outreach to those property owners to get some insight into what they're thinking about opportunities and constraints in Lincoln City. We wrapped up our work in the middle of July and delivered the final inventory to the city. It now lives as a geodatabase within the city, wherever they keep that. And we're wrapping up our project this evening with a presentation. We're looking forward to potentially talking about next steps and where this leads for the city. Next slide. So I'm going to hand it over to Sabrina, who will talk about what we did and how we did it. So take it away, please.
Thanks, Seth. In order to create a tool for identifying potential brownfield sites, we first needed to develop a geodatabase of all the tax lots in the city and compile supporting GIS data sets for use in classifying those properties and narrowing our focus to only those that meet certain criteria. The methodology that we used to develop and refine the tax lot inventory can be described in four steps. The first step was data compilation. In response to our data request, the city provided us with tax lots in GIS format sourced from the Lincoln County Assessor. The city also provided other GIS data sets relevant to our analysis, and we obtained zoning data from the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. The layers pertaining to environmental concern, we compiled from the Oregon DEQ, specifically the environmental cleanup sites and leaking underground storage tank sites. We geocoded the addresses using the locator service from the Oregon Geospatial Enterprise Office. After compiling all these data layers into a single geodatabase, step two was to identify underutilized properties by calculating the ratio of each tax lot using values provided by the assessor. We divided the value of improvements on the land by the value of the land and set the threshold for classifying a property as underutilized at less than or equal to 0.5 to 1, indicating that the land is worth twice as much or more than the value of the improvements on that land. Next slide, please. From there, step three was to refine and narrow the inventory by identifying potential brownfields. First, we isolated the tax lots that were within the city's zones of interest, including commercial, industrial, and mixed use. Then we removed single-family homes and tax lots that were in multifamily zones but smaller than a quarter acre. We also removed publicly owned property and wetlands. Finally, we set up filters to provide context for further refinement, and with input from the city, determined which remaining tax lots were under consideration or high priority. Step four was to do a visual survey of the properties under consideration as potential brownfields. We used Google Street View to inspect each tax lot in our refined inventory. The goal was to identify catalyst tax lots that may be good candidates for redevelopment by looking for properties that were vacant or those with dilapidated buildings that don't have a functioning business. We added our observations as notes in the inventory, and with input from the city, we selected 10 catalyst properties as candidates for owner interviews. At this time, I'll pass the presentation back to Jen, who will give a demo of the inventory and how we were able to filter the tax slots based on the GIS data sets.
Great. Thank you so much, Sabrina. I'm going to switch to my browser here to show you the tool we created. So this is the, can everybody see this?
Yep.
Okay, great. This is the tool we created for the city to be able to interact with the data and explore additional criteria and filter data based on their attributes. So here you can see the tax lots of interest, the original tax lots of interest are shown on the map with lower utilization ratio properties in red and higher utilization ratios in green. And there's additional data in here, supporting data that can be turned on and off, like zoning and opportunity zones and wetlands, to see how those interact with property features. Over here on the left are a bunch of filters that we put together for the city to explore and try out. For example, utilization ratio between 0 and 0.5, you turn that on, you see just those properties. And there's many other filters that we added, including we added a filter for the city to use to mark each property as under consideration, not under consideration, under consideration and a priority, or to mark them for an interview. I have that one selected here, and I can just turn it on and see only those properties. We added another filter to do our virtual windshield survey, to mark each property as either suspect suspected to be a brownfield or not suspected to be a brownfield. We can see just those as well. So this is a great tool for the city to get to change different criteria and see how they interact. And they can also, they can also go here and click on individual properties to get information about just that site. And here's all the data we added to be able to filter on these characteristics and make notes in our survey. So with that, I'll switch back to our presentation and tell you more about the results. So these are results of our survey. You can see here the number of properties identified at different stages in the project. So we started with 3,300 properties within our zoning of interest, and we applied additional criteria listed here to narrow these properties down to 842. 517 of those properties are considered underutilized with land with a utilization ratio that is 0.5 or less. And then we applied additional criteria with the city's review and identified 196 properties that were potential brownfields. And after conducting the windshield survey, we identified 99 properties as catalyst properties. And with that, I'll pass it off to Seth to tell you about the outreach we did.
Thanks. So the catalyst properties were identified based on their characteristics related to historic use, underutilization, location within the city, and the potential for something like environmental contamination or other impediments to redevelopment. So those are great starting points for identifying opportunities to advance improvement, addressing blight, making kind of investments in development in the community to advance economic development. And so of those, we identified 10 that were of particular interest, again, based on their characteristics, location, knowledge of past uses and current ownership, and prepared a questionnaire along with Jody and Allison. And then I attempted to contact them, was able to reach three by phone and had in-person or over-the-phone interviews with them. And then the balance, we mailed flyers out with the questionnaire and received one response so far. And generally speaking, I would characterize the responses as very positive. These property owners were bullish on Lincoln City and the opportunities there, favorable of the city and its policies, generally speaking. There's some grumbling about the tree code, things like that, kind of expect. And environmental contamination was not highlighted as a major issue, but recognized as a potential impediment to property transaction or redevelopment. So something to follow up on. But generally speaking, very positive and encouraged in the outreach from, by the outreach from the city. Let's go to the next slide. So discussion here is really centered around developing this toolbox, an economic development toolbox to help advance roles for the city and community in economic development. And there are a few areas that just immediately stand out as next steps following up on the inventory. So obviously, number one is to continue outreach to property owners. That would be a recommendation to follow up with those 99 property owners in some fashion. Challenging right now, but I think there are ways to do that. Growing and supporting urban renewal as well as other city economic development programs. Allison and Jody can talk more about that, and I know that they're really interested in doing that with all of you. And specific to brownfields, there are state programs available primarily through business organs, really your first stop for brownfield-related grants for site characterization and assessment, to cleanup, and even there's even money for planning and redevelopment. There are some new programs the states enacted within the last five years, including authority to create a brownfield-specific land bank authority and enabling legislation that allows for property tax abatement to incentivize brownfield redevelopment. USCPA and the EBA both have highly competitive but really quite comprehensive grant programs focused on both brownfields and infrastructure. And we feel that the information generated by the inventory helps provide a strong baseline of information for framing a really competitive grant application to either one of those agencies. And then obviously, there's great opportunities for public-private partnerships here in terms of outreach directly to property owners. And next slide, please. With that, I think we'll open it up for questions. We'd really welcome any, any kind of questions that you have for us.
That's great. Thank you. I was curious, the, I wrote down a note, I wondered how operating under the COVID restrictions, but then as you kept going, it sounded like most of your work could be from afar. Is that?
Yeah. So one of the things, this is almost entirely a desktop exercise, as we call it, right? The one disappointment for us was that we would normally complete the windshield survey through the windshield of a car, and we were unable to do that. So Jen and Sabrina, I mean, really got creative and adapted and used available technology through Google Earth and Google Maps and the Street View. It's not perfect. It's not what we would really ideally like to have. The windshield survey provides a good opportunity to check our assumptions and test things and learn things on the ground. But I think the Google Earth provided a good plan B.
And I guess Seth, the other one that jumped out was the lack of contact. Only three owners willing to talk to you. Is that how you interpreted, or they'd never returned calls, or what?
Actually, the fact of the matter is, it's, that is, that is another way that COVID impacted this. Property owner contact information is not publicly available through the data sources that we used. County assessor does not make that information available publicly. So we happened to have those three property owners' contact information, or Allison and Jody did on hand, and so they shared that. We had the mailing addresses for the rest and mailed the flyers out. In, you know, under normal circumstances, you could go in person to the business, either the business owner is the property owner and have the interview in person, or get the contact information to the property owner that way. But that, that was a restriction also from COVID on the ability to complete the surveys.
So what you're really saying is that might, more may, may reach into you or into, I guess it would be you, that since you wrote letters to these owners?
I think they're going to Jody, actually.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Good.
So yeah, fingers crossed, more will respond. But, yeah.
Great. Jen, would you mind taking down the slide? Then I can see the other folks. Great. Counselor Mark?
Yeah, well, follow up on that last question. So there's something, because of COVID, where you were not able to go door to door, just go knock on doors? I mean, people go knock on doors these days.
Yeah, MFA has a fairly strict travel policy. So, yeah, we were not able to do that.
I was, I wasn't clear on, well, I'm not clear on the definition of brownfield. I think of brownfield as a vacant lot, but it sounds like these properties have buildings on them.
Oh, right. Yeah, brownfield is a much broader term in its official definition. It really is any property that is impacted by the presence or, and this is important, the perceived presence of contamination. So stigma can be just as negative on a property as actual contamination. And yes, many, many brownfield sites have buildings on them. You know, many were, you know, a majority of brownfield sites in Oregon were gas stations or dry cleaners. And so many of them still have commercial buildings on them. Many of them still have operating businesses, but they would be considered a problem.
So I guess, you know, I'm at a loss to really get a sense of, of the cooperative nature of these underutilized properties. So I appreciate the gymnastics that we went through to get there, and that's helpful. But using, you know, three, four property owners who I, if I interpreted what you said, they appreciated being contacted and touched. But who knows? You know, I assume we're touching them with resources that could lead into development of their properties. That would be the intent anyway, I would assume. But I guess I don't have a sense of how receptive this audience, small, I appreciate, is to this kind of tactic.
Well, it's a small sample. That's true. And when we originally scoped this project, we assumed that we would have the ability to access more people. But really, the surveys, I don't want to overemphasize that. But really, the surveys, I don't want to overemphasize that component. That's really more of a kind of qualitative add-on to what we did, which is really intended to be much more of a database generation and kind of starting point for further exploration. The, the purpose of the questionnaire was to get a sense of receptiveness, as you said, from some property owners that really met the criteria for potential redevelopment opportunities. And I will say that one of the property owners we met actually was in the process of selling this property. And the other two, you know, welcomed the opportunity to talk with city, with the city about potential programs to help incentivize, whether it's cleaning up their property, improving stormwater drainage was something that came up. So they were receptive to outreach from the city, I would say generally, but I wouldn't use them necessarily as a, you know, it's a, it's a very narrow sample.
Okay. So could you though, then Seth, go with other communities and talk to us a little bit about, you know, certainly the next steps? And, you know, there's a reason we identify, you know, underutilized is because we want them to be, you know, higher utilized properties and assessed values and everything else, as well as cleanup. Can you point to these kind of processes as actually helping a community make some advancements?
Sure. Yeah. There are a number of good examples around the state. The city of St. Helens is a good one. Similar-sized community, maybe a little bit smaller on Highway 30, just north of Portland. Former mill town. So the issues there related a little bit more to larger industrial sites, but they also have historic commercial corridor. We completed an inventory for them, and that led to multiple follow-on grant programs. Couple from the state of Oregon and then two also from the EPA. One called an area-wide planning grant. It was focused on a former veneer, veneer mill on their waterfront, and it provided funding for market analysis, site reuse, conceptual planning, infrastructure design. So I guess that's to say, there are resources available to communities that are able to leverage the brownfield component and can grow additional, you know, assessment work and planning and economic development out of that. Yeah, there are a number of examples from around the state, really. Josephine County in southern Oregon is another community I've been working with. They've completed a similar, well, grants passed, completed the inventory, but it's led to work in broader parts of the community with Josephine County. Let's see. Bend and Deschutes County also have completed an inventory and it identified a number of properties, including it helped facilitate the OSU Cascade Campus expansion. So I mean, it can, it can help with a lot of very diverse community development activities that you wouldn't necessarily associate with just kind of straight ahead looking at underutilized properties.
And that, that helps. What I'm hearing you say is, you know, this is groundwork. We've got to have that to help catapult for a grant with some of these other state and federal agencies.
Yeah.
And there is one money available, but also light at the end of the tunnel as far as hooking up with some property owners and making some real progress?
You know, I really see this as a, as a, as a great launching pad for the city. Just getting this knowledge in place, getting the data in place is a huge first step. You can't really define the issue or the problem until you know it. And, and that's what this inventory does. It gives a sense of scale, the impact, the types of challenged properties, but then also points the way toward opportunity, whether it's in commercial corridors, in neighborhoods like the Taft District, where we identified a number of catalyst properties that were underperforming, including one that fairly certain is a brownfield.
Great. Thank you. Any other, any questions or thoughts from counsel? Counselor Casper?
Were any of these in the tsunami zone or out of the tsunami zone?
Jan or Sabrina can confirm, but I believe we intentionally removed properties that were in the inundation zone. Is that correct?
Yeah, if I recall correctly, none of the zones of interest that we used were actually overlapping with the tsunami zone.
Great. All right. Well, thank you, all three of you, and Jody and Allison for bringing that to our attention. You know, it's another tool as we march on with our economic development progress. So thank you. And where is the firm located?
We're in Portland.
Portland?
Portland, yep.
Great. It's always nice to have in-state.
That's right. Yeah. It'd be close. We wish we could have come out to do the work in Lincoln City. That was a huge letdown that we couldn't come out and be there in person. And to be there this evening in person would have been great as well.
Well, you are as, as much as we are, so it's okay.
Yeah. Great. Well, thanks again for the opportunity. Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks very much, all three of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go ahead then. Moving on, and Allison or Jody, as you drop off, did you have any, anything you wanted to add or, you know, seeds of thought that we should, you know, that whole study?
Yeah, like Seth said, I think it's really great launching pad. So I think there's a lot of directions a city can go from here. And one of those things to explore, I think, would be focusing on engagement with property owners. And again, that's challenging during COVID, but it's becoming the new norm. So, yeah, I just reiterate what Seth said. It's a good, good base level work to, to go from.
And Mayor, I'll just add that, you know, staff identified that this was a need a few years ago when we had the Goodwill site redeveloped. That had been sitting partly vacant and partly a little bit blighted, some might say, for a number of years. And it was a former gas station and had some contamination that was not known and then was identified and then was remediated. And so we have a very successful nonprofit redevelopment site there. And I think that where there are other opportunities for a similar project, that we would like to make sure that the city has the opportunity to support those redevelopment sites by getting grant assistance. Because I think the EPA grants and other grants, you have to actually have a municipality or a county jurisdiction receive those grant funds in order to go to the private property owner. So if we don't set something up to receive those funds and channel them to people who are on the precipice of making decisions about redevelopment, then it will just take longer for those properties to redevelop or sell.
Yeah. Good point. All right. Well, thank you. Why don't we move ahead then to ordinances? And while we've got, you know, your hat on, future economic development and urban renewal here, this is ordinance number 2020-20. Mr. Appicello?
Your Honor, Counsel. So you have a choice here. I can read the revision to Exhibit C, which won't, really won't take that long, or we can redo first reading. What would you prefer?
I'd prefer, since you've made some changes to it, and that, that would be the reason the changes are significant enough that you'd have to read. So why don't, why don't we just do first, first reading? Is that, does anybody have an issue with doing the first reading on this ordinance?
Yeah, you could redo first reading, or we can, I can read the changes and proceed with second reading.
Well, let's, let's just redo first reading.
Okay. As you recall, the reason for the delay was to address with some findings, some opposition comments, and that's basically what I added. And it's been available, so it's appropriate. This is First Reading of Ordinance Number 2020-20, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City, making certain determinations and findings related to and approving the Roads End Villages at Cascade Ed Urban Renewal Tax Increment Finance Plan and directing notice of approval be published. Ask for approval of first reading. If unanimous, we'll talk about second reading.
There a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
All right.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve first reading by Mr. Counselor Hoagland and a second from Counselor Parsons. Discussion. And now with the first reading, we've included the findings, which include addressing the North Lincoln Fire and Rescue objections. Is that?
No, this was the objection from the housing.
Oh, that's right.
And that they objected and said we, Fair Housing Council, that we hadn't addressed Gold Ten. So these findings explain that and cover it. So if, if you pass the motion, we can move on to second reading.
Okay. I'd like to remind the public that this has had a great amount of public outreach and public hearings. So there's, and through planning as well. I think Jody explained to us before, you know, a couple of years has been in the works. So there's nothing being rushed through here. Counselor Mark, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, I don't know, was there, were there any other significant changes beyond the findings for that housing council? Just to summarize, so that...
No other changes were made, and the gist of the findings was, as staff had told you, this is not an amendment to the comprehensive plan. The statute 457 requires that it be reviewed against the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations and other appropriate documents. That is what has occurred. The planning commission and council made a finding of consistency, but in an abundance of caution, if someone was to say Gold Ten applied, I made some findings of how Gold Ten is met by this ordinance.
I thought that was clear. And then just to again reiterate, because, you know, we are seeing emails from people who just aren't really understanding what we're doing here, and, which I, I understand because it is sort of a complicated and confusing and not very familiar and almost counterintuitive process. But I'm happy to remind people that their taxes are not being increased. And that's, that's, that's really number one. And if they would, if they think they are being increased and they would like an explanation of why all of us are repeatedly saying that they're not being increased, that's, you can contact Counselors Allison, maybe, I don't know, who should I put on the line there, Allison?
No.
And it's, it's not, it's not a simple explanation. It took me some time to really grasp the concept. I think I've got it now well enough. I had a constituent who I was on the phone with, and I thought she seemed to come away understanding my explanation, so I could do. But it's understandable if there's confusion on this.
It is. Thank you, Counselor. All right. Any other questions? Let's go for roll call.
Counselor Hoagland?
Yes.
Counselor Parsons?
Yes.
Counselor Mark?
Yes.
Counselor Casper?
Yes.
Counselor Hinton?
Yes.
And Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great.
Your Honor, Counsel, this is Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2020-20, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City, making certain determinations and findings relating to and approving the Roads End Villages at Cascade Ed Urban Renewal Tax Increment Finance Plan and directing that notice of approval be published. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
We move to approve the second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
All right. We have a motion by Counselor Hinton and a second by Counselor Mark. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hinton?
You bet. Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, Allison and Jody, make it work. All right. Let's go to ordinance number 2020-14.
Your Honor, Counsel, this is set for second reading. I sent you an email earlier today with a few changes. I'd like to read those. Ultimately, I'd like to ask that you continue this ordinance for the reasons stated in that memo, but I'd like to get at least your agreement that these changes be made. So the first change would be in the title, strike the words and placing them in Chapter 934, because this ordinance does not amend Chapter 934. A separate ordinance will do that. The second item would be to add back in as E, to, rather, to replace E on lines 161, page 161, line 14, beginning on line 14, to state, "No sign shall be constructed, erected, or maintained within the public right-of-way except as installed by a duly constituted governmental entity." That language was stricken. And to remove language which states, "Permanent signs placed such that any portion or, or the entirety of a sign or sign structure is within the right-of-way must obtain approval of such placement from the roadway authority having jurisdiction over the right-of-way in which the permanent sign will be placed." And then below that, F, to strike the existing language F, and to replace it with, "A protrusion over a city street or alley right-of-way may be approved by the city engineer not to exceed 24 inches, provided the bottom of the sign is at least eight feet above finished grade and all applicable permits and license fees are paid for such encroachment into the public right-of-way. No protrusion into Highway 101 right-of-way is allowed." And then a slight change on the nonconformities, Section 1772050. This is page 162, line 13. It includes the phrase, "Changing the types of materials comprising the sign." Basically, get, strike those words and replace it with the word repair. So it would basically say, "And repair." Repair is a defined term, so it's very clear what is entailed. In addition to that, under prohibitions, I would like to request that we add T, signs prohibited by state or federal law. And if you remember, when we talked about this maybe two years ago, that's how we address what state and federal law define as basically obscene. So you don't write the word obscene in your ordinance now. You say if it's out of state or federal law. I'd also recommend you add back in U, signs that create glare. And I'd recommend that you reword the temporary sign provision, and this is all under prohibitions, to reference some of the signs that were removed because they're temporary signs, but because I wanted to make sure that people understand that these are now not being permitted. So temporary signs, parentheses, including but not limited to flying signs, pennants, strings, and streamers, inflatable signs, flags, and the like, and then continue with the language as set for. So that's, that's me reading the, these, these changes. I'd like approval to make these changes, but my... But my preference would be to have the ordinance continue to either the 24th or the 14th. And mostly my basis for that is to sync this ordinance with chapter 934. And the policy question that I have for you, if you have direction, if you don't, that's okay too. But what this ordinance does, this, this ordinance in front of you is strike some temporary sign permits from the Title 17 Land Use Code. So for example, portable signs are currently permitted under Title 17. They're being taken out. And temporary banners is permitted currently under Title 17. It's being taken out. No department of the city has come forward and said, hey, I'd like to administer the temporary signs permits. I'm sure Ed up at the, you know, VCB is just jumping up and down or Explore Lincoln City saying, I'd like to do it. But the fact is, we haven't really talked about whether or not another department will take over those permits or, and I think this is more likely, those will be converted into exemptions. So you might be authorized to have a a temporary, I think they're called portable signs, A-frame signs. You might, that might be an additional exemption I add to 934, so you won't have to get a permit. I don't know if you feel the same way about oversized banners, but it is possible I could add language to 934 that would allow oversized banners during certain times of the year, like election times. So that's what I was thinking. If you have ideas about how I should draft that, I'd appreciate it. But we haven't really had a staff discussion about that. And that's, plus I'd like to get 934 in front of you, so they all go into effect at the same time. That's, my recommendation would be to continue this. And I don't really care if it's August 24th or September 14th.
Mr. Chandler, could you help us with that?
Yeah, as far as timing goes with well that Richard has talked about, as far as the working with the staff, I would recommend that you go to the September 14th meeting to give us plenty of time to put it together, so it just comes back to you once.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right, yes, Counselor Hinton.
Mr. Appicello, I'm just curious if we don't, if the temporary, if the temporary signs do not require a permit in the future, then how do we control the size and all of that? Because if there's no mechanism to ask them to remove it if it's not appropriate, I mean, how do you manage it?
It's still the code. It's still a code enforcement violation. You are subject to the limitations on the exemption. If the exemption says you can have an inflatable sign between, you know, say, December 22nd and December 27th, and you have an inflatable sign on November 29th, you're violating the terms of that exemption. So we can issue you a citation. It's all the same enforcement. It's just not a permit that gets processed. We don't have to separately go through and make a decision on that application. We told you it's okay to have that as long as you comply with these restrictions.
Okay.
Counselor Mark.
I had a couple little things that jumped out at me and I it's, let me put it this way, I'm happy to have the opportunity to have a more thorough reading of these, these long, long ordinances that we've had to review. So on page 160, page 160, oh, line two, this is, this struck me as a grammar thing. The following list of items is exempt from the zoning permit requirement, but they are still subject. I, I would suggest the following items are exempt. Because it's not really the list that's exempt, it's the items that are exempt. And then you get the plural subject, and that matches up with the plural in the second part of that sentence.
I would agree.
Followed us to end. On page 161, this might sound really tiny, but at oh, I thought I marked it here. In no ca, oh, yeah, it is paragraph C there near the top, the second sentence. In no case, I would delete the comma there. In no case shall any portion or component, da-da-da, I don't think we want the comma. And under 040B, all permanent signs, again, I would take out that comma. A grammarian, an American grammarian would tell you you should say that. All permanent signs that are faded. If you're British, Mr. Twig might be able to confirm, you could say which, but you don't need the comma in any case.
I'll, I'll just point out that this, I would not the cook.
Okay, oh, I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just, this could have been any, and there's probably a dozen others.
And please send, send them to me. Counselor Hinton hasn't been shy about sending me.
Okay, I'll do that. Well, let me just mention one more because I think it's something you're going to want to consider. 168 is the last one. I noticed under illumination, you know, LED lights are now becoming extremely popular. I've put new fixtures in my house and they're wonderful. I noticed that under D3, there's a reference to wattage for incandescent lights. Under four, there's a reference to whatever the rating is, the power, I guess that's power for neon tubing. And number five, I also, so that's a power rating for fluorescent lights, but there's no reference to wattage or the equivalent or the intensity of LED lights. And I wonder if that's something that we might want to have in there.
We'll look into it.
Okay. All right, so the question on the table is our, is it unanimous consent that we continue this to, this ordinance to September 14th? To allow, finish it up?
Please.
All right. Anybody object? Hearing none. Okay, so it's continued to September 14th. Ordinance number 2020-15.
Your Honor, Counsel, my recommendation for this ordinance is that I not conduct second reading now and that we also continue it to September 14th. Counselor Hinton did ask a few questions about it, which I think pointed out to me that I think it needs a little more time. And I think it needs to be reviewed at a staff level so that we're very, as a staff, we're comfortable with what's proposed here. I do think that the change is a good change. I just think we need to maybe spend a little more time with it as a staff before we adopt it. So that's my recommendation is to continue it to September 14th.
All right. I'd rather have the staff in agreement with whatever we bring forward. So is there anybody disagreeing with continuing this to September 14th? Hearing none and seeing none, okay. Done. All right, ordinance number 2020-10.
Your Honor, Counsel, like the urban renewal ordinance, my recommendation here is that we go back and conduct first reading again. And, and if it's unanimous, proceed to second reading. There were significant changes since first reading, but significant only in terms of length. There was about 45 pages of duplicative text in the document that you conducted first reading on, mostly in the deleted section. But there were also omissions in the deletions that we corrected. And I'd rather not read 45 pages of deleted text. There were several changes I emailed to you during, well, the day of the last council meeting. All those changes have been made. And I believe that we sent you basically evidence of that day so that you could, you know, be sure that we weren't just adding something else. I do believe this is ready, so I'm going to proceed. This is first reading of ordinance number 2020-10, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Title 17, zoning, amending all of chapter 1720, multiple family residential RM zone, amending chapter 1724, professional campus PC zone, section 1724020F, chapter 1728, recreation commercial RC zone, section 1728040BF and J, chapter 1732, general commercial GC zone, section 1732KU and 1732110E. All of chapter 1734, Nell Scott Plan NP District, all of chapter 1745, CAF Village Core TVC Zone, all of chapter 1750, Ocean Lake District, chapter 1752, supplementary regulations and exceptions, section 1752210E2, and amending all of chapter 1774, commercial design standards, and amending chapter 1780, special uses, section 1780. Doesn't seem right. That's for approval of first reading. And if that goes through, then we'll proceed.
Counselor Hinton? You're unmuted.
I grabbed the wrong mouse. I just only have one other change I'd like to recommend.
Okay, why don't we put a motion on the table first?
Okay.
So do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I move to approve the first reading of ordinance 2020-10.
Great, is there a second?
First reading.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Counselor Hinton and a second from Counselor Parsons. Okay, Counselor Hinton and your suggestion?
Okay, I just, in reading through this again, I just want to take us to page 493, if that's the correct page. I'm not sure.
I believe that's, I believe that's the correct page.
Okay. And just a second, I have to get there.
493?
Yes.
493?
493, let me see. Yeah, and line 14 and, but really, line 18 is just the continuation of the discussion about the added word of brighter colors. We struck part of it, I guess, Richard, if you could correct me.
It's basically in 7A on page 154 of the ordinance. It has, the last part of that paragraph 7A is a sentence that says, building trim may feature brighter colors as accents. And I think the counselor is requesting that we strike that language.
Yeah, just that last sentence.
You don't like brighter colors is?
This isn't, this isn't about me. This is about where we started years ago and the process we went through and what we agreed to in the original ordinance that went through planning and came, I mean, planning commission and came to us and we approved. And then when it got reshuffled, somehow this language got dumped in there. And I just, I don't like that process. We didn't, we didn't discuss it before when we approved the original language. And I don't approve of it now.
Okay. So comments on the suggestion to strike?
Would it, would it prevent people from making brighter trim as accents though?
That's not, I don't think that, anyway, I'm, I don't know how to answer that question.
Well, yeah, if it's not in there, it wouldn't be allowed. Would be the, the point.
But I mean, are we, do we want to be so restrictive that if it isn't, then if you could only do this versus the other way of, we don't want something? You know, it seems like we're preventing a rather large list from happening.
I think what we're doing is putting, putting things out there that we didn't agree with before. And I don't really want to, it's not my intention to restart that whole conversation over. That was years long and we came to a conclusion. And now what I'm saying is that somehow, all of a sudden, during a reorganization, there's a whole new idea in there. And that didn't come out of that process. And because we put so much into it, so much resources of staff time, so many public opportunities for input, so many work sessions and money for, was it $80,000? Maybe Townsend will remember, for a consultant to take us through that process. And all I'm saying is this, this is not what we had agreed to.
I think we get, we got really close on to what brighter would be. Because brighter is not purple, but brighter could be a lighter shade.
It could be zebra stripes. I mean, that's not the point.
So Counselor Hinton, if you could hold on, you know, you've, you've made your point and it's a good one, but time has traveled past us. There's been numerous readings on this and this is no different than taking an ordinance that is passed and relooking at it a year later, you know, to see if you're still in agreement. So I, I think, I don't think it hurts to at least discuss this item. Your, your point is well taken. It's, it is inconsistent, which was originally came to us. So that, that's there. Counselor Casper, you, did you have a, something you wanted to?
Oh, I, I just agree that I don't think the sentence needs to be there.
Okay.
And Your Honor, Counsel, I, I don't really want to tie this sentence to first reading. So I'd request that you vote on first reading. And then if you want to remove this sentence or not remove it, you make a motion on that after first reading and then I'll read it if the motion is to remove it. And if it doesn't get removed, then we'll go to second reading.
Okay. Why don't we then, why don't we go ahead and act on the motion made? And that's to approve the first reading and then we'll come back to this. Mr. Twig, thank you.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Casper.
Yes.
Counselor Hinton.
Yes.
Counselor Hoagland.
Yes, he said.
Counselor Mark.
Yes.
And Counselor Parsons.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank, thank you. All right, so why don't we entertain a motion? Counselor Hinton, could you make a motion to strike?
I'm sure. I move to strike the sentence, building trim may feature brighter colors as accents on page 493 or whatever Mr. Appicello has a difference.
It was 493.
493. And that's found on line 18.
And is there a second, a second from Counselor Casper? Thank you. So discussion. Any, anybody want to weigh in on that motion? Okay. Mr. Twig, could we have a roll call, please?
Hinton.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Hoagland.
Yes.
Counselor Mark.
Yes.
And Counselor Parsons.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great.
Thank you.
Your Honor, Counsel, this is second reading of ordinance number 2020-10, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Title 17, zoning, amending all of chapter 1720, multiple family residential RM zone, amending chapter 1724, professional campus PC zone, section 1724020F, chapter 1728, recreation commercial RC zone, section 1728040BF and J, chapter 1732, general commercial GC zone, section 1732040 1732040KU and Section 1732110E, all of Chapter 1734 Nelskott Plan NP District, all of Chapter 1745 Taft Village Core TVC Zone, all of Chapter 1750 Ocean Lake District, Chapter 1752 supplementary regulations and exceptions, chap, Section 1752210E2, and amending all of Chapter 1774 commercial design standards, and amending Chapter 1780 special uses, Section 1780. Uh, ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
There a motion to approve second reading and adoption?
Second reading and adopt the, adopt ordinance.
With the changes as read.
With the changes as read of 2020-10.
Second.
A motion from, uh, Counselor Kasper and a second from Counselor Parsons?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hard to see your lips moving. All right. Um, and that included the striking of the words, uh, as previously discussed. All right.
Yes.
Roll call, Mr. Twig. Any discussion? Oh, Counselor Mark?
Uh, I have, I guess a, a question. Maybe I should have brought this up after first reading, but it, it's, so on page 478, back to page 478, line 28, uh, specific design elements for pearls. Can somebody refresh my memory? I, I know that this was presented to us at a work session, and I understand, I mean, I'm really handicapped by not being in on the ground floor on some of this stuff, so I don't know what was discussed when. But I thought there was at one point a request to not have specific design elements for pearls, and we were going to get away from that. Can somebody?
That, that's right, and they were all, they're all consistent now. This brings it consistency.
Okay, but if you read through the ordinance, it says Ocean Lake, or Wakoma has this, and Ocean Lake has that, and Nelskott has something that I assume is different, and Taft, that language is all in there. Color City.
There's a great deal of uniformity now. There are some, they, I mean, we didn't do away with the pearls, so there is still some identification.
Okay, I got another one.
Okay.
On page 549. Uh, this first section that has some strikeout in it, A, except, I, I noticed the word sleeping is, references to sleeping is removed. So is, does camping necessarily mean sleeping?
That's a different ordinance.
Okay.
Different ordinance.
Oh.
You went, you went too far.
Went too far? I'm sorry, I thought it was all part of this. Oh, never mind.
Okay.
Then I'm done.
All right, good. All right, we have a motion to approve with a second, uh, and make it up record. Um, Mr. Twig?
Counselor Kasper?
Yes.
Counselor Parsons?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Hinton?
Yes.
Counselor Hoagland?
Yes, but who made the motion?
Uh, Counselor Kasper.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And Counselor Mark?
Counselor Mark?
Thank you.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, ordinance 2020-16.
Your Honor, counsel, uh, this is first reading of ordinance 2020-16, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City, amending Title IX Public Peace Morals and Welfare, Chapter 908 Offenses Against Public Order, amending Sections 908050 and Sections 908055. I sent all confidential, uh, email with attachments, uh, regarding, uh, this ordinance. Um, essentially, this, uh, ordinance makes a few adjustments, probably the most important of which is to allow or add to the exceptions in 055, uh, a traffic control order can now authorize overnight, uh, camping essentially on a city parking lot. Um, that's probably the most important aspect of this. Um, that's, that would be a permanent traffic control order, not in, not, there's another, there are several, uh, items that are allowed to override the camping prohibition. One is a special event permit, one is a parks permit, uh, one is, uh, an, an emerg, uh, uh, I'm sorry, um, I believe the emergency, uh, order is in here. Uh, so this, this is just adding to that list. Um, yeah, emergency declaration is, is another way to do it. So a traffic control order, as you know from our discussions about parking, the, Ron has delegated authority, and then he brings to you, uh, periodically his traffic control orders for, uh, your blessing in a resolution. So that's probably the most, uh, significant part of this. I did add a few other things to be consistent, uh, including, uh, striking the prohibition on sleeping, which is something, uh, we're all doing. Um, I ask for approval of first reading. Um, if you do want to get into, uh, discussion on this, then I'd recommend we have an executive session.
All right, is there a, uh, motion to approve?
So moved.
Counselor Parsons, um, motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
From Counselor Kasper, thank you. Um, discussion on a limited basis? Uh, Counselor Mark?
Uh, I, I'm not sure about that last comment about the executive session. I don't know if that applies to this. So, um, on page 549 under D, there's a reference to, um, sentence provided below for willful violation, da, 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 is used in this subsection, willful violation means a violation that occurs after the person has received within 90 days preceding the current violation, a citation for violating, da, da, da. So if someone, if someone receives a violation beyond that 90-day period four months before, and then does this thing again, I mean, couldn't a person just keep repeating?
Yes.
Okay.
And this was, again, we created a Class E violation. There was, there is no Class E under state law. When this ordinance was originally enacted, we created an E, which is lower than any, any state law violations. I believe it's a maximum $75 fine. Um, and, but we had, if you were a repeat offender in the sense that you had just gotten a violation within the last 90 days, it bumps to a Class C. So that was, uh, a compromise at that time.
Oh, okay. Otherwise, you just.
And before, before that, it was a crime.
Yep, all right. Okay, we have a, all right, Counselor Mark? All right, we have a, uh, motion on the table to, uh, approve with a second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Parsons?
Yes.
Counselor Kasper?
Yes.
Counselor Hinton?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Mark?
Yes.
And Counselor Hoagland?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Your Honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance number 2020-16, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City amending Title IX Public Peace Morals and Welfare, Chapter 908 Offenses Against Public Order, amending Sections 908050 and Sections 908055. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Counselor Kasper?
Um, I move to adopt the ordinance 2020-16.
Correct. And that's approved second reading as well?
Second reading.
Second reading, yeah.
Yes.
And, uh, uh, second from, uh, Counselor Parsons. Oh, nope?
Hoagland.
Who was it? Oh, Mr. Hoagland. Okay. Counselor Hoagland seconded that motion. Any, uh, discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Counselor Kasper?
Yes.
Counselor Hoagland?
Yes.
Counselor Hinton?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Mark?
Yes.
And Counselor.
Counselor Parsons? Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. All right, uh, we're down to special order of business, and, uh, before we, uh, deal with that, uh, topic, I have a, uh, statement to read if, uh, you will, uh, this is from, uh, Counselor Diane Kooz. Can you please read at council meeting on Monday? Thanks, Honorable Mayor, council members, Lincoln City staff, and Lincoln City residents. When I was given the opportunity to start a new journey serving on city council, it was our intention to be here for the four-year term. However, life plans change, so with sadness, I have resigned my position. The next chapter in our life takes us on a long road trip, listening to good music and discovering beautiful places, debt and commitment free. I want to thank each of you for the time you spent with me, sharing your knowledge, point of view, and of course, the many policies and procedures. There's a wealth of wisdom in this group, and I have gained so much. And really, who knew a pandemic would be on the agenda? Zoom meetings are fine, but I really miss council chambers and the residents who shared their thoughts. In my opinion, Lincoln City is a well-run city, and though there is always more to learn, I can say I'm proud of Lincoln City's leadership, octopus, and all. In our travels, Jim and I will be ambassadors for Lincoln City and make sure everyone, one knows to explore Lincoln City after the pandemic, of course. Thank you again for everything. Be safe, be well, peace. Diane Kooz. So Diane has resigned her position from city council, and our, uh, next item on the agenda really talks about how we handle that, declare a vacancy, and how we handle filling that position. Mr. Chandler?
Yes. Uh, first of all, on behalf of the staff, we'd just like to say thank you to Counselor Kooz and how much we will miss her. It has just been a great pleasure to work with her and to have her support. Um, as far as filling a vacancy when it occurs on the city council, uh, the charter, uh, gives you two options. You can, uh, appoint a, um, a replacement to fill the remainder of that term, or you can fill that vacancy through a special election, and a current election such as we're in can count towards that special election. If you choose to, uh, um, uh, to fill that vacancy through an appointment, our charter and our ordinances are silent as to the method by which you can do this. Now, we've done it in two ways in the past. One is that, uh, the, um, the counselor or the city council itself or individual counselors can, um, bring someone forward, a name forward to be appointed into that position, and then it would take a motion and a second, of course, and then a vote by the, the city council to do that. Or you can, uh, accept applications and, uh, receive the applications, review them, you could interview them, you, you don't necessarily have to do them, do, to do an interview, but you could do it through application if you choose to do by appointment. If you choose to fill the vacancy through a special election, uh, as I mentioned, you can select the election that we're occurring, currently in or November 3rd as the special election. Uh, if you recall, we did that after the passing of, uh, Counselor Ward and, um, uh, when his vacancy came about. Um, there are a few things to note as far as timing goes. If you were to declare tonight that you wanted to fill this by a vacancy, uh, the candidate for, the candidates for, uh, Ward Three would need to, um, submit.
Ward Two.
I'm sorry, thank you, Ward Two. Thank you. Ward Two would need to submit their petition with 25 sign, signatures of, of voters by August 19th at 5:00 PM or 10, or nine days from now. Um, we have two candidates that have already filed their petition. If, um, if one of those or both of those candidates wanted to, um, uh, to pursue the remainder of Counselor Kooz's petition, they would have to withdraw their current petition and resubmit a petition, uh, for that vacant seat again by August 19th at, uh, 5:00 PM. We currently have, um, I'll just give all of the, the, uh, the numbers for the candidacy. We have one, uh, candidate that has filed for Ward One. We have two candidates that have filed for the four-year position in Ward Two, and we have one candidate that has filed for the position in, um, Ward Three. Now, the real action that you need to take tonight is that if you choose to fill this vacancy by, uh, a special election or by our November 3rd election, you need to take action tonight. Uh, if you fail to do that, there will not be sufficient time because your next meeting won't be until, uh, the 24th of, of August, past the filing date. If you choose not to, uh, fill the vacancy by election but would rather do it by appointment, you don't necessarily have to make that decision tonight. You could do that at your next meeting and determine whether or not you want to simply make an appointment through a motion by, uh, counselors, or if you want to, um, receive, uh, applications for that position.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Appicello, is there a, uh, some kind, do a by motion or something that we declare, uh, the position vacant, or is just stating it enough?
I, I think, uh, a motion and, and that's voted on by the council to declare the vacancy is appropriate.
Okay. Uh, could I have a, uh, motion to declare the, uh, Ward Two Counselor's seat previously held by Diane Kooz as vacant?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And from Counselor Kasper, um, motion by Counselor Mark. Um, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Okay. Uh, now the, the question on hand is to application process or an election process? Um, thoughts? Counselor Kasper?
I think the, um, election process as of November 3rd would be appropriate and timely, um, and so I, I think that would be a, um, a logical way to fill the vacancy.
Great. Uh, Counselor Mark?
Yeah, I would prefer this special election. I, I think there is time, um, unless someone used to get over the hump that I had to get over, which was wavering back and forth on what I wanted to do. That, that took months, but actually, the process itself just it was a matter of days, so that, that, that is not that hard. Um, but what if, what happens if no one comes forward then?
And Your Honor, counsel, I guess if, if you do make a motion to have this vacancy filled by election, special election, you could, I suppose, have a contingency that if no one files by the election deadline, you'll bring it back, and then you can consider whether or not you want to have another, uh, specify another election date or fill it by appointment.
Uh, yeah, I, you know, it's amazing because I've, I've seen applications seem to bring out, um, lots of people. Uh, there's something about an election that, that kind of calls the crowd, so to speak, and, uh, and becomes a little more serious applicant. So that's something to think about, anyway. And, you know, with nine days remaining, you know, if there was somebody on the cusp or waiting for the last second, now would be it to challenge any of the one single applicants so far. Other comments? Otherwise, you know, I'd entertain a motion. Counselor Casper?
I move to fill Ward 2 vacancy by special election as of November 3rd.
Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Casper and a second by Counselor Parsons to do the November 3rd special election. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? All right. Thank you. Okay. Appointment. We have appointment to the Sustainability Committee. Counselor Hoagland and Counselor Casper, you both did the interviews, did you?
Yeah. There's Riley.
Ducked out, aren't you?
Yes, I interviewed Michael Edwards, who had been on the Sustainability Committee before. And the family moved away for a bit and returned. And so he was anxious to return to the Sustainability Committee. He's quite a biking enthusiast and has a background in history and currently writes for the Oregon Today Coast paper. He's very enthusiastic about being on the committee and I think he'll bring good attributes to the committee. So I recommend that we appoint him.
Great. Mr. Hoagland. Counselor Hoagland?
Yeah, I also feel that way. Yes, I was very enthusiastic and has wanted it before and still wants to do that. And it comes, I, you know, do recommend him.
Great. All right, any questions from counsel to counselor interviews? If not, entertain a motion to add Mr. Edwards to the Sustainability Committee.
I move to add Michael Edwards to the Sustainability Committee.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Counselor Casper and a second from Counselor Parsons. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? All right, thank you. And it's always good to have citizens adding to our committees. So thank you, Mr. Edwards. All right, we have an amendment. Amendment 6 to the memorandum of agreement between the Confederate tribes and Sluts Indians of Oregon and the city of Lincoln City. Mr. Appicello, you gave us a couple of choices.
I can tell you, I have not heard back from legal counsel, but I suspect you would like the second version more because it provides more flexibility. I do not have strong feelings about one or the other. I simply drafted one first and then he told me that they had a problem with a portion of that. So essentially, the second version had a little more flexibility because the restriction would be that the emergency impacts the tribe financially and doesn't necessarily have an impact in Lincoln City. Again, it's their preference. Apparently, for the second version, which is on page 563. It's up to you. I don't have a strong feeling.
All right. And I might remind counsel that this came from our joint meeting with the Sluts Tribal Council as this memorandum is every two years updated and renewed. And we were in the midst of COVID and they were pointing out to us you know, that perhaps something like this added, this wording added, might be appropriate. And so I'd asked Mr. Appicello to take a look at it and work with the tribal council. Mr. Chandler, you want to, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything to add. I don't have a strong preference either on either of the versions.
Okay. Counselor Mark?
I just want to mention something. It looks like it's probably been in this document for years. So here I am. But just on page 563, just above the new language. At first, I gotta say, I now that I'm reading over the introduction to this, I see that the difference in the two drafts was explained. But I had trouble sorting out until just now. I really didn't see exactly what language had changed. So I wish that had been a little maybe that's my fault, but I wish that had been made a little more clear. But in the language, just above the bold where it says, based on the annualized average Pacific CPU, that must be some sort of price standard, price standard? I would like that spelled out. But then it says or 2.5, which is that supposed to be 2.5%?
Yes.
Is that, okay, that wasn't clear to me. But that's all I had.
CPU is Consumer Price Universal versus the professional, which is CPI.
So that's going to give us some percentage of increase or 2.5%, whichever is less.
Right. Yep. Yes, Ron?
And I might point out, Mr. Mayor and counsel, that the amount that we have budgeted for this year is $316,135. Where it was $80,000, that's the growth of it from $80,000 in July of 2008. So over those 12 years.
Thank you. All right. Entertain a motion to approve Amendment 6 with the suggested wording and the how would we identify this?
The second version.
Second version?
I'd like to add the word percent to, you know, for Mr. Mark.
Yeah, we should.
All right. I will move that we approve the Sixth Amendment, the second version of the Sixth Amendment with the changes that we discussed.
And second from Counselor Hinton? All right, thank you. And all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? All right, thank you very much. And item 9 annex, that is
Your Honor, I believe that was continued to this meeting. And so this probably I think we were in the public hearing. And I think that, as I recall, we had to stop because we lost the applicant's representative. And this matter got continued. So I think that this application probably should have been under public hearing. But I think a motion, maybe or unanimous consent to continue it to the 24th. Staff just didn't have time to review when it come in.
Okay. So entertain a motion to continue this item to August 24th meeting? I guess we could do it just unanimous consent. Does anybody have objection of continuing to the 24th?
And Your Honor, the applicant did agree.
Okay. Does anybody disagree? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you.
You didn't get to see Riley's head shaking.
Yeah.
I sensed it.
I know, but you know.
I'm eating, I'm sorry. It's a yes.
Better than not be watching.
Yes.
All right. Next item is residential parking restrictions. Chandler?
Okay, Mr. Mayor and city council, you had asked the staff to consider two types of parking restrictions. Or one of those was for no parking areas or how do you establish no parking areas? And the second one was establishing residential parking permits. Now, I might point out that Richard had mentioned earlier in the meeting that orders that I give that affect parking will have to come to you for ratification. We have two of those. One that deals with parking and camping and overnight in designated areas. The other, which was just a few days ago, is some control on Eighth Court, which I'll discuss a little bit in just a few minutes. Those, based upon what we hear tonight, we'll be bringing those back to you by resolution at your next meeting. So as we look at this, we look first of all to try to find an underlying philosophy as it pertained to parking and to find a basis for which you would make these kind of decisions on having a residential parking permit or having, restricting streets to no parking. The easiest way to say what the underlying philosophy is is that on a general basis, we need more parking and not less parking. And so if we were going to err, we would err on the side of having more parking. As I mentioned, we were looking for the basis for making a decision on either one of those. And what we turned to was the transportation plan that was adopted in 2015. Now, David, do I have the ability to share the screen?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Okay, what you should be looking at is a map. Let me get rid of this other stuff. You should be looking at a map. It's called number 12 Multimodal Street Function and Classifications. The city has divided or the transportation plan, which was adopted by the city council, has divided roads into four classifications. The first one is a municipal arterial. That is essentially Highway 101. You have then minor arterials. Those include parts of Logan Road and West Devils Lake Road. And then also down on southeast 51st. You then have collector roads and then you have local roads. Each of those of the minor arterial, the collector, and the local road is then further defined based upon the amount of traffic that it receives. And those would then become high use, medium use, or low use. So as you're looking at this map, if you look at West Devils Lake Road, it is a minor arterial road that is a high-use street. If you look at Northeast Voyage Avenue, you can see that it is a local road that is a low-use street. The reason why those are significant is because they then determine the street design of they then determine the street design for the roads. And I'm going to go to examples of the street designs. These, by the way, were all in your packet. So if, looking at this page, this is the optimum design for a high-use minor arterial road. So again, you would be looking at West Devils Lake Road, parts of Logan Road. Your optimum width would be anywhere between 52 to 77 feet. Would consist of a turn lane, two 12-foot travel lanes, buffers, bike lanes, and then landscaping and walkways. Now, one thing you'll note on that is it does not have parking for this type of street. If I go through for a medium use, again, you're looking at, for a medium-use minor arterial road, no parking on those roads. If I continue to a medium-use collector road, you start seeing where parking would be added. Two 11-foot travel lanes, a bike lane, and eight-foot parking lanes on each side. The parking lanes range, depending on the type of street, from seven foot to eight foot. Travel lanes are from 10 foot to 12 foot. So that's the basis on which we would use or we are proposing that we would use to make the kind of decision as to whether or not you're going to restrict parking on those roads. Stop share. Okay. We went ahead and since we had the several of the people that live on Eighth Court to use that as an example of how this would play itself out. And that's why I say I've issued that order. We will bring that back to you on the 24th for you to ratify that or not to ratify that. But it counts as a really good example of what you would be looking at. The process for which we looked at creating no parking areas or areas on a street where you would restrict that, it would be initiated by application or petition of the individuals that are living on the street. We would, it would be by an area that is large enough that you're not dealing with single lots, a block or some other defined distance that you would have in order to look at an area. You can set standards by which how many people have to make the request or to petition the city. Different ordinances that I looked at throughout the United States would have 30%, 50%, 80%, whatever percentage that you would use. They were kind of all over the place, except they tended to be higher in the 60% to 80% of the people that live within that area would have to have that petition. I'm going to share the screen one more time on this to give you the example of how this would play out. Okay, so you should be looking now at we'll use the low-use local road. You notice that when you look at this design, you have two travel lanes with a total width of 20 feet. Then you have an on-street parking of seven feet on each side. So in other words, the right-of-way, the minimum right-of-way you would need for this configuration would be 14 feet. So as we, I'm sorry, 34 feet. 34 feet is the minimum width that you would look at. So one of the criterias that you would be looking at is do you have sufficient right-of-way in order to fit this configuration? In other words, do you have 20 feet of travel lane plus at least seven feet or 14 feet for parking? Again, using Eighth Court is the example for that. They have approximately 20-foot right-of-way. They have a 10-foot travel lane. It's essentially a one-lane gravel road. And they're using portions of it to park on the sides. But yet there is really no parking curb or parking area. So in this case, the order that I issued was that because they could not meet at least 27 feet of right-of-way, that the order makes that whole street no parking. And those signs are set to go up on August 21st for no parking. If they had had 27 feet of right-of-way where we could have created an on-street parking, we would have done it on one side. If they had had 34 feet, we would have done it on both sides. Now, the biggest question that we debated as we went through this staff and also with the residents that live the residents that live up there is that if you have one travel lane, which Eighth Court and many of our roads have, but you can still get parking on the side of it, should you permit that to do that? Or should you just strictly say the 20 feet is the minimum width that you need for your travel lane, and then you need a curb or a parking area off that? Our roads are so varied, and they're so different as far as what the parking, or as what one lane versus a lane and a half and those things, that to be easiest and the fairest to administer, we looked at the idea of you have to have more than 20 feet of right-of-way in order to have on-street parking. So the first thing that we looked at was how is it initiated? It would be by petition, and those standards would be established by the city council. We looked at then, how much space do you need? You would need on a local road at least 27 feet of right-of-way in order to do that. And then the third thing that you would look at is the topography. There are areas where they actually have 27 feet or 34 feet of right-of-way, but when you get off the travel lane, it's a drop-off, or it's a big ditch that's a swell, or there's a wall that's in place, even though the right-of-way goes beyond that. So there's the physical characteristics of the shoulder of the road that would also have to be considered as you look at whether or not to establish a no parking zone. Any questions on that before I jump into the residential parking permits?
Ron, as we get into this and next steps, would be part of this prior to an ordinance or anything, would you, could you bring back a map of the city showing the affected streets then that where you'd recommend or that would be affected with no parking where there was once?
Mr. Mayor, I think I can bring back examples. But as I drove throughout the city on virtually every street that we have, they are so diverse, you almost have to do a survey on every street, but then they are really diverse on what happens off the shoulder of it. So it was very hard to look at and say, this section would be parking or this section would not. But I can certainly bring back several examples of what you would find.
I guess, I'm wondering out loud, because the criteria is we need more parking, not less. And, you know, I'm just thinking out loud, potentially this could take away a lot of neighborhood parking that exists today.
It could. That's one of the reasons why we looked at the idea that it needs to be initiated by a petition of the people who actually live there. Part of that reason is also it's not just visitors that are affected by it.
Yeah.
It would be the people that actually live there as well. And several of the streets that I looked at, people are parking on them. It's essentially a one-lane road. They're comfortable with it. If we simply went in and said, "No parking," then they lose parking for any visitors, for a third car that they may have. And so that's why we look at the idea to initiate this by petition, not the city going in and doing it itself.
All right, and that takes care of my concern. Okay, good point. Thank you.
Okay. On the residential parking permit area, again, we looked at the idea that this should be initiated by application or petition of individuals living on the street. And again, it should be evaluated on a space that's large enough that you're not looking at individual lots, a block, or some other measurement that you have. In addition, the applications could be made by a neighborhood association if one exists. Some of the criteria that we looked at for establishing residential parking permit areas would be things such as the effect on the safety of the residents in the area, the difficulty of residence of the area to secure adequate on-street parking adjacent or close to their residence, alleviating any problem of unavailability of residential parking spaces, the need for some parking spaces in the area to be for tourists, the availability of parking for residents within the area, number of tourists or commuter cars. I specifically looked at tourists that exceed the total number of spaces available, the average number of parking spaces that are occupied on a daily basis, and then the lack of street parking for residential parking. Now, as you consider a residential parking permit, most of them have the restrictions or the permit at specific hours. Okay? So for example, if you lived in an area that had high commuter parking, the restriction would be during the daytime, but not necessarily during the nighttime. We may, with tourists, just be the opposite of that, where the restrictions that create a residential parking permit would be in the nighttime, the evening and nighttime, and not necessarily during the daytime. That's when we may find it the most difficult to find parking places. Other topics would be, especially in the residential parking area, would be additional parking permits for guests. There also becomes an administration part to dealing with residential parking permits. And so another consideration are fees associated with those permits to help cover the cost, the increased cost that the city would have to administer those parking permits. So what I'm really asking of you tonight is, are we on the right track? And do you want us to develop this into an amendment into our ordinance, is to try to establish these two types of parking restrictions?
Got it? Counselor Casper?
Yeah, I think would be very helpful, especially for residential parking permit areas down in the recreational commercial area, where there's a battle for the residents who live here and the visitors. And I know it's hard for the people who live here or have second homes here. And especially you mentioned the night feature. That's the issue, is where do they park at night? We're next to a place that says, "No parking overnight." So there might have to be some adaptations also looked at.
Counselor Hinton?
I think we're on the right track, Ron. I like the work that you all have put together so far. And I'm looking at Logan Road as maybe some kind of an example if that could work. I think you mentioned it as a high-use minor arterial. Is that correct?
A portion of it is, yes.
A portion of it. And just kind of, yeah. I just think because in Rhodes End, there's so much demand for parking and the neighbors, I mean, of course, I am hearing a lot of complaints about fireworks and garbage right now that's more than can be handled by one bin. But parking is a thing that year-round is just off the charts. And we did receive that letter from, or email from REIA. So anyway, I just think if we could, if I could ask you to spend a little time on how this might work for Logan Road too, looking at their issues that they sent to us. But overall, I think this is, I think this is a huge step in the right direction.
Counselor Hoogland?
Yes, hi. So I think that how we do this will speak a lot. If we put a bunch of no parking signs all over town, that's a lot of, it's a very different look than permitted residential parking only. It speaks two different ways, and I think it's important to think of it like that. And yeah, we do have, you know, one area of town condos that were built with no parking and only public parking immediately around it. And other places, I think in Rhodes End, where you have people saying, "No parking, private parking." And is it or not? Because we know how strong, you know, the tourists are there, but also trying to be in a nice, positive way. I remember, I think I remember, in the police system, there's a way in which they can put notes on people, their vehicles and things like that, and it's not a ticket, and it's not anything like that. And if we had a way in which people would submit their driver's license or their vehicle information to the police department, then they would know if somebody tries to call the cops to tow it, it would be in the system as not a way. Trying to take away the way in which it would cost so much money to have tags on the cars, and then the cars are tagged, and then people wouldn't feel safe with, you know, a residential sticker on there. So trying to address all those things easily. But, and then if family were to come, then the residents would know, hey, this is family. So I think there's a way to do it that's, could help everybody and look really nice.
Okay, thank you. And Ron, I would think, besides a fee for the permit, would have to include not just the process, but the enforcement, some kind of, you know, component there.
That's how I went through school, was getting out parking tickets.
No wonder you were so popular.
Yeah, got hit a couple of times.
I'll bet. But I think we're on the right track. I would echo Counselor Hoogland's concerns. And I guess I'm wondering out loud, does it make sense to try the no parking streets first and foremost before you spend too much time on permits? Because I'm just wondering, a lot of the tightness and stuff is because of the narrow And I just, I don't know if there's, we need the double whammy right-of-way?
One of the challenges that you will face, if your preference is the idea of a parking permit versus the no parking, so that you create on-street parking, is the restriction based upon the right-of-way width. We have a lot of roads that are only 10 feet in travelway, but are less than 27 feet in right-of-way. If you are, if you want to put a preference to the idea that you can have parking along there, but there's a preference for residential passes, then that may not work as well, because you might have to find a different standard to use until the road is actually more fully developed. Because we do have quite a few where you can have, there is sufficient room to park, but not if you say it's the 20-foot right-of-way, because they only have like a 10- or 12-foot travelway.
Well, I guess my first reaction on the narrow roads and stuff, it's more of a, from what I've seen, a safety issue to get, you know, garbage trucks and fire trucks and on a consistent basis. I don't know that, you know, residents have taken advantage of the right-of-way, whatever there is there to park, but if there isn't room, I don't know that we want to encourage any kind of parking on a narrow road. And that would be my first thought. Now, as I'm saying that, I guess what you've been telling us is that will push those cars supposedly somewhere else. And thus, the parking permit is where you're, I think, what you were saying?
It could be, yes.
Or we have to go into the parking business and start charging for neighborhood parking or something? Thoughts from council? What kind of direction for staff? Because the next step, Ron, would be what, to flush this out a little further and start working on ordinances or?
Yeah, what I'd like to do is to bring something that is a little more concrete for you to look at, so you can actually see how it plays out. And so it'd be in some kind of an ordinance form. And what I'd like to do is to bring that back in your first meeting of September. That would give you time to really flush it out with Richard and look at all of the details that need to go into it.
All right. Counselor Martin?
I'm a little vague on my thoughts. I think we are on the right track. I appreciate the work that's gone into this. On the Eighth Court situation, is that really, seems to me that there, the complaints those residents had had to do with certain residents on that street misusing the right-of-way or, that's a separate issue, it seems to me. Has that been, have they received any relief?
Yeah, there are two or three other issues on Eighth Court that are not, that are related to parking, but they're not specific to the parking issues. But there's really, all along that road, there's really nowhere to create adequate-sized shoulder for parking that would, that still allows emergency vehicles and everything else to go through.
That's an unusually narrow street. I mean, I've driven most of the streets in this town, and that's one's peculiar, I think. In Color City, you know, lots of people, it's the older neighborhoods where the, they might have driveways, but they're narrow, or, I mean, there's only so many vehicles on there, and people rely on parking what I assume is in the right-of-way. And there are a couple of, two houses in particular that have no parking signs on their fences, and one says, "According to ordinance, da-da-da, you will be towed." And I, I've taken a little, I've passed by those, I take a little umbrage, and I don't know if they can do that. But I've actually looked at the tax maps and the photos, and it, which I'm not sure how accurate those tax map photos are in the county assessor site, but actually those fences I'm talking about, the one in particular, is well away from the right-of-way. In other words, the fence is well within his property, this person's property. And I think they might actually very well have the right to have a no parking sign on that fence. And where I'm going is, you drive through Color City, you don't really know where the right-of-way is. I mean, I assume the right-of-way goes onto people's yard, people's lawns, really, and people park there sometimes or not. But it's hard to know where it's okay. In general, I don't think we really have that much of a parking problem here, so I don't really see, you know, except for a really busy normal July 4th, there's some crazy exception. For the most part, it's not a big problem down here. I don't think you would need a permit here. Somebody else might disagree. With the exception of 62nd Street, which is a main thoroughfare and is very narrow, and people park along there, and they need to get in trouble for doing that.
Thank you. All right, sounds like you're on the right track, Mr. Chandler, and see what comes back. Do us a favor and don't do any of these 120-page ordinances or anything. You know, keep Richard at bay, Mr. Appicello.
We will do our best.
All right, thank you.
It's very impressive when I tell friends, I'm going to ask, "What are you doing? How's it going on council?" And I say, "Well, I'm reading a 580-page agenda packet." And they go, "Oh, my."
It's a novel, yes. All right, how about a COVID update?
So in addition to your packet, there's just really a couple of things that I want to mention. I won't go over the items that are in the packet. I have two documents that are in front of me that I wanted to share with you. The first is the submission dates for the cars' reimbursements and funding. If you recall, we had applied for and received, and we received the money of $143,364. We then applied for, we're waiting to hear back from them, for $108,979. The next application date is September 11th. That would be cost, I'm sorry. That would be cost, I'm sorry, it's September 14th. That would be costs associated with March 1st through that date. Um, and at that point, we intend to apply for $149,558. We've been trying to make sure that the funds are, uh, relate, well, of course, they have to be related to our expenses associated with the pandemic, but also, um, we're looking at also which funds they're coming out of so that the money's going back into the funds which they are using. The second document that I wanted to mention.
Yes, sir. Regarding that, is that the money that's coming, federal funds coming through to the state and then doled out to the cities? Is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
The second document that I wanted to mention to you is that I just received a copy of this today. It's dated August 6th. Um, it is a letter from our county commissioners to Governor Brown. Uh, it is their application for reopening and they have submitted, uh, Lincoln County request to enter Phase Two of the plan for reopening Oregon on August 24th, 2020. So that is officially in and, uh, they are looking for a date of August 24th for that. We have, as we have been looking towards whatever date that is of going into Phase Two, uh, we've been, uh, as a staff preparing, looking at what that actually would mean for us. Uh, you, some of you have had the opportunity to see what, uh, the community center has, has been doing and how they will, um, uh, reopen. Uh, library, uh, is looking at, uh, reopening in Phase Two by appointment. Um, and as we are looking at our city offices, um, and the, you, the, the, really, the customer service offices that you have are finance, planning and public works. Right now, the plan what we're looking on is that the office would remain closed to walking traffic, but would be available for appointments, in particular for planning and public works where developers, builders and so forth need to, need to meet with, uh, with our planning staff. Um, we are not intending to, um, bring all of our staff back, uh, all at once. Uh, we're looking at bringing them back on an as-needed basis based upon the demand that we would have. A good example of that is that right now from our Explore Lincoln City staff, all but one of our employees are working from home. Um, there's not, uh, a lot of customers that come up to the Explore Lincoln City office. So it's not necessary to bring all of them back, uh, quickly. So, um, uh, we will provide you with a little more detail on that, uh, over the next week, uh, as we try to finalize those plans and now that we know a little bit more of what we're looking at with the county.
Right. And Mr. Chandler, uh, regarding the, uh, some of the stuff that was in the packet, um, especially the utilities, uh, the water and sewer bills?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. Um, so if you recall, a few months ago, we, uh, we did not do shut-offs. Um, and, uh, so what, and so what I put in the packet is a report on where we stand compared to this time last year. And what you'll see on that is that those who are current in their bills are almost exactly the same. The shift that you're seeing is that, uh, in that is those that have been 30 days late have now shifted a little, there's fewer of those and more that are 90-day late. Okay? So it's in, so where we're seeing the, um, the, uh, what, uh, the people that are taking advantage of, of that is those that have been in delinquency anyways. But as far as those that are paying the, the bills on time, it's still relatively the same.
Okay. So that, that was going to be my question. How many of these lates were actually filed for a deferral? Do we know, uh, how many have taken advantage of that?
No, there really hasn't been anybody that's filed for a deferral. It's just simply they have, they're not paying the bill and we're not shutting them off. And so our, our aging report is more, but even in that, it's not, it's, it's not hugely significant, uh, as, as much as I thought it would be.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Any, uh, any questions of council regarding COVID? Uh, Councilor Hinton?
I'm, I'm just curious, sometime in the future, Ron, could you share with us, um, what types of things that you've been applying for reimbursements from the CARES Act?
Okay.
I just, I have no idea.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, um, Councilor Martin?
We have a, a response for Marcy Baker's question about Explore Lincoln City and when can they start using those, uh, free giveaway things and what was the deal with that?
We have used them a little bit, but it's been very limited. Uh, for example, KOIN-TV, we used it for a reporter who came down. Uh, we used it to stay at, at a hotel so that they could run a story on the city as part of our just keeping ourselves relevant. Uh, we are not trying to bring tourists in right now. We're not actively going out and pursuing to say, come to Lincoln City. So, um, uh, when we get back into that, when, as our billboard says, the coast is clear again, then we'll use them more actively. But at this point, we're really not trying to advertise to have people come to the city.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Casper? You're on mute. We can't hear you.
There we go.
There.
I was just wondering, because we're in this COVID situation, we used to get quarterly financial summaries and I would think they'd be helpful to look at again. Um, I don't think I've seen one for several years. I have one in front of my nose here, but I, I think it would be a good way to re, kind of process and see how much we lose because of the situation that we're in and how much percentage we have left of the budget as we go forward, if anybody else feels that way.
Well, we, we will get that to you.
But let, let's recall what, you know, you just finished a year on June 30th.
Mm-hmm.
So you're only, uh, July and August, so.
I'm saying in the forthcoming, in the forthcoming year.
So, what do you mean in the forthcoming year?
Well, we're just starting the fiscal year.
Right.
So we'll provide one to you in October for the first quarter.
Yeah.
We'll also provide one for the end of this last year. Um, that first quarter is one we're watching very closely, uh, because it's the, it's the trend that we'll see as far as what our revenues will be like, in particular our transient room tax. Um, when I, uh, visited with Ed about this, um, we, we're paid the transient room tax quarterly, so we really won't know the full, uh, the impact of the virus until October. But we do regularly give reports about occupancy levels. Um, and what we're seeing is that we're somewhere around 15% below where we were, uh, last year at this time. It's not as heavy as it is that I was thinking it might be, but it's still come, it will probably, they'll still likely come in less. Now, the other thing is though, um, I don't thi, is, this is more of a, a watching than an actual counting of numbers. It does not appear right now that our number of people that are here on the weekend is less than what we had last year. So what we're seeing is, uh, what we think we're seeing is a lot more day trippers. And as I've had a chance to talk with businesses, that seems to bear itself out.
So, thank you, Ron. And, uh, Councilor Casper, I just wanted to make sure you realize that you were not wanting either a monthly, but out, out, after the first quarter.
Yeah, yeah.
That sounds good, okay. Um, Ron, do you have anything else for, um, city manager report?
I do have a couple of things that I do need to give to you, some information. Um, we received a very unfortunate letter, um, just today. Um, Allison was given a report that on behalf of our developer Innovative Housing Incorporated, I regret to inform you and the city council that they were not successful in receiving the OHCS or the Oregon Housing Community Services 9% Low Income Housing Tax Credit for this 2020 round. Um, they'll provide us some more information. Uh, there were three to four times the number of applications that is usual. And so what that will mean is that that project will have to wait until next year to apply for those funds again. The other question that we received, or the other thing I wanted to mention that we received, um, quite a bit of questions about has been the, uh, fireworks activity since, um, the 4th of July. Uh, between July 6th and August 2nd, we have received 46 calls for fireworks. Um, of those, 33, uh, of the, each of those an officer has responded to, and of each of those responses, 33 of them, they were not able to locate the people that had fired them off. In other words, by the time they got there, the people had, had moved and got inside. Uh, the others, uh, remaining 13 have been either, um, uh, meeting with the people who, uh, who set off the fireworks or the people who, uh, called in about the fireworks. Um, uh, but most of the, most of the ones that we have, calls we have seen by the time our officers were there, uh, those who had fired the fireworks were no longer in the area. Um, also one final thing, I will be sending to you in the next day or so. We have still a list of other projects that we're working on. Um, I need to send you an update on those along with some timeframes. Um, there's one or two that I think we're going to need a work meeting on to get a sense of direction from you and, uh, and I'll put some, some dates that, uh, for you to look at. So that's all I am, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Appicello, you, uh, wanted to us to deal with a decision, uh, by the planning commission?
Uh, an appeal has been filed of a decision by the planning commission denying, uh, I think the project's is named The Cove, Phase Three. Um, so you're not going to decide any of this tonight, but there is a decision for you. Uh, do you want to hear the appeal on the record or do you want to hear the appeal de novo? Uh, since I've been here, I do not recall ever having an appeal on the record. And we need to know this now because we'll need to notice the, uh, appeal hearing and let the applicant know. So, um, my recommendation is have it de novo appeal.
Okay. Is there any, um, as, as I understand of the record, we would just be reviewing what has previously been put in. De novo would allow us, uh, the applicant to give either new information and, you know, it hasn't come up.
Anyone, anyone would be allowed to submit new information, staff, the applicant, any, any objectors, uh, any, any persons in favor. Um, if the record, however, it would just be no testimony, just argument.
Okay. Thoughts from council? Uh, Councilor Martin?
Uh, just curious in that, in that process, does, does the applicant have the, uh, opportunity to revise the, the plan then and, you know, to, uh, address whatever concerns were raised by the planning commission and they could?
I believe that, um, if you do a de novo hearing, they have the ability to, uh, take the input they previously received and answer the objections. I think they, yeah, they'll have the ability to submit additional evidence, argument to address concerns that were raised.
Okay, great. Any other thoughts? Uh, entertain then a, a motion to either, uh, go, uh, of record or the de novo?
I move to, um, approve a de novo hearing.
Uh, we have a motion by Councilor Casper and a second by Councilor Martin to go de novo. Although any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? There you have it, Mr. Appicello, de novo.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else from?
Nothing else.
Okay. We have then, uh, any, any comments come in, Mr. Chandler?
No.
Okay. Uh, let's go to, uh, councilors then. Uh, Councilor Hinton, you always have a list to go through?
I see it, but I do. Thank you. Um, I just, I have a question first for, um, oh no, I can do that through email. I just had a question about COVID for Ron, but I can, um, email him about that. But the other question I have about, um, about COVID, and I was trying to get your attention before we left that subject. Um, the, um, situation on July 4th where the police responded to an incident that was pretty awful. Um, and they were so, at least this is what they said, they were disappointed that they weren't able to place at least one of the, the, um, people who were doing the offensive acts in jail because the jail is closed because of COVID. Has there, um, been any follow-up? Um, is there another place people could be placed in jail if they needed to be? That wasn't the county jail? I'm just curious, cause that one I think shook us, um, I'll say residents to our core. Um, that he, that one fellow was able to just be out and about, um, after that incident, so.
Can I turn that answer over to Chief Palmer?
Okay.
Oh, I forgot he was there. Did he leave us?
Are you there, chief?
He's working on it.
Oh, okay. There he is.
He's halfway here. There he is.
All right.
Distracted on emails and other things, so. So I'm sorry I missed the question or?
Okay, um, I can make it much shorter. Um, it's a question about the jail being closed, the county jail being closed because of COVID, um, and the restrictions they've, um, put on using it. And except for, I guess, person-on-person types of crimes. And, um, I think it was you, one of you guys in blue, said, um, that it was a real disappointment that we weren't able to, after that July 4th incident at Spanish Head, be able to, um, access that jail. My question is, is there another jail that you can use so people that really should be in jail, at least for the night, can, can go there? Are there just any discussions that you've been having even with the county jail about, um, being able to use their jail?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, um, the very next Tuesday after the 4th of July, we had our, um, monthly executive leadership meeting, um, and had this discussion with the jail commander and the sheriff. Um, since then, uh, they've been, um, much more receptive to, uh, if we identify a, a problem person here in town that we feel is a public safety issue. Um, they've worked really hard to accommodate our requests. Um, the only challenge now with that is that as they have looked at that and helped us manage that, they have rapidly arrived at, um, their current capacity. So as of last week, I think they were down to just one or two beds open. Now, when we say capacity at this time, um, one of the things that they're doing because of COVID is, uh, um, maintaining one person per cell, uh, in each pod. Whereas prior to COVID, they would, uh, at times have, uh, between two and four people in each cell. But in order to kind of minimize the cross-contamination and that sort of thing. And something else that they've identified to us as they've gone through this process is that, um, by. by reducing to one person per cell of their available capacity, they have actually minimized a lot of other problems and challenges that they have within the jail. So, you know, they've got reduced capacity, but they've gained some other advantages doing that. But right now, we're just down to, is the person that we have that we want to lodge rising to a serious enough of a public threat that they would be genuinely considered for lodging at this point? And now we're down to, do they actually have room? Or do they have the ability to trade ours for somebody else that they already have and that they would be willing to release in order to accommodate ours? So it's, it's a challenging situation. I think they're doing the best that they can under the current circumstances. And no, we don't have another jail that we can take people to.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you're still having that conversation.
Yeah, they're working with us hard.
That's good. Can I add a couple of other things?
While we have Chief Palmer there, could we ask him, is there any update on his open house for the police building?
Not as yet. I mean, we've been working hard on giving small group tours of two or three people. We are in the process of transitioning patrol and that's kind of the last phase of move-in. We hope to have that accomplished by the end of this week for the most part. We've got a couple of bits and pieces that we're still trying to work out. They're just installing our intoxicilizer tomorrow. And they're actually doing that before we're quite completely ready in our suspect processing area to, to manage that. But we'll juggle things as we need. And then I just have to work with Ron to identify what's, what's an appropriate way to manage an open house under our current restrictions. I think as we move into the Phase 2 release in the county, that will be an easier thing to, to accommodate. We're sure anxious to, to show it off. And if you haven't had a chance to visit, please take advantage and, and come see us. And if you know of people that would like to do smaller group tours that you, you feel are important to come through right now, we're sure happy to schedule those.
Thank you.
That's great.
All right, Counselor Hinton, back to you.
Thank you. And thanks for the update, Chief. My next question is about fireworks, Ron. We were gonna put that on the calendar sometime to have that discussion. And I just wanted you to know that, that I've been one of those callers for complaints. We continue to get them. Actually, last night, we didn't have one, not one firework. And it was just like, oh, that's nice, that's what it's supposed to sound like. But Saturday night, we had them until 10:30. And generally not as many as around the 4th. So the last one, I think there were three, like maybe 10 minutes apart from each other. But they're huge, they're colorful, they're the commercial type of fireworks. And of course, I've been hearing about that from the neighborhood that I live in. And one complaint was that they've, they've had to take their dog to the vet and it's cost them over $100 to control his diarrhea from the fear of the fireworks. So, I mean, this is not just noise, but it's very disruptive.
And. My plans were to, I don't, I don't know that we need to bring back a group of residents. We, we know what the issues are, we know all of the steps that we've taken up to this point. So my plan was to bring this back to you for discussion. I was going to do it at your next meet unless you wanted to have it at a work meeting. I guess I'll leave that for you guys.
Yeah, I'd, I'd say, you know, let's do it the next meeting, just put it on as a topic.
Okay.
Anything else, Counselor Hinton?
I have an entire page about VRD situations now. Garbage overflowing, nobody's picking it up. One of the owners of the VRD has been here for three days and he's, and he's called because he, he gets better reaction from the management company than we do. Too many cars parked all over the place, more people than 10 in houses that may not even hold 10 by their, by their license. Trespassing, I mean, this list, it's long, it's mine. And I've been, of course, being called by people. So we need to get somehow a better handle on enforcement for VRDs. It is, it's out of control. It's like going back three years. The last couple of years were better and better. And this year, it's just totally back to like, we don't even have any, any controls or enforcement. I have yet to see the VRD person in planning drive the streets. I don't know if he even comes out anymore. And it's a livability issue. I have heard so many times that residents do not want to be watching these VRDs all the time. And so managing by complaint from residents is getting a little tired. And people are getting very angry about it. And I'm hearing about it, Mitch, I don't know if you are too, but I am. And, and I just want to make the suggestion out loud, I guess, right now, screwing up all my courage, that I think it needs to be moved under the police. Sorry, Chief, but it's not, we're not doing a good job. And we have to make a change.
Okay.
And there's garbage strewn all over my street today. And the cleaners have been there and they don't touch it. And anyway, that's all.
Counselor Hinton, just, when you get those complaints, do you ask the caller if they filed a complaint through?
Oh, yeah. They know what to do, they know exactly what to do. And they call me after they get no response. I'm their last resort when they're pulling out their hair, 10:30 at night, 10:40 at night. I'm getting.
Okay, we all get them, I hear you.
Okay.
All right, thank you, just one question. All right, Counselor Casper?
We had a SWAC Sanitary Waste Advisory Committee this week, and we have a new director. And I'm so excited. We have a focus and it's to be inclusive of all the cities in Lincoln County. So we can focus on educating the public, like our tourists, and outreach of programs and even working with the cities, especially for us, it would be like organics education. And I contacted the Sustainability Committee to see how they're doing because I know they haven't been meeting because of the COVID and transition and directors. But I suggested that our new coordinator come to the Sustainability Committee meeting. He'd be happy to. And I spoke to Tina French at North Lincoln, and she would also like to talk to the committee. Because our focus, I think, was with Sustainability Committee about food packaging for restaurants to go, working with that as one aspect, another was to grow your own food. So I'm not sure where the focus of the committee is. But it seems that if we're coming into our new recycling program in the spring, it might be helpful for all of us to help educate the public about why we're doing this. Because some people don't realize that there was this SB, SB 263, which covered the environment status of the whole state to improve by 2035. And so I would encourage us, if we think it's important, to help the sustainability look at that aspect of curbside and organics recycling as a, as an issue for them to work on. That's my suggestion there.
Yeah.
And the other thing was, we talked, we as a council talked about a climate action plan. And I'm sure you all got the email, how there's a meeting on Wednesday, August 12th, 7 to 8:15 PM. It's a group of organizations and citizens who have put together a plan because they wanted a plan put together. And so I myself am going to listen to it and see what they've come up with because I think that's pretty innovative for them to go forward with their own plan. Because we've been sitting here talking about it, how are we going to do it, when will we do it? And perhaps they've already started it. So I will be happy to report that.
Great, thank you. Counselor Mark?
Yeah, I wanted to, thanks Counselor Casper for bringing that up. And I'm looking for some sort of positive reinforcement way to address the concerns that we're hearing from people who are upset about the composting plan and the big, another big bid and another big bill, well, not a, well, another bill on their garbage. And maybe if they could understand maybe what some of the options are and, and why, why we're doing this. And I mean, one of the options, as I understand it, was that if I'm not putting yard debris in my garbage bin, I'm putting it in the compost bin, maybe I can cut back on my garbage bin to every other week, instead of every week, and the costs is actually going to balance out. So there's, there's that sort of thing. I think people aren't aware of all the ramifications and the, and the need. And I guess, I did make a note to myself as far as parking, and I, I can't imagine this going anywhere given the state budget, but that idea, Mr. Chandler, you had talked about when we did a tour down at Rhodes End about getting the state to redesign the parking area at the Rhodes End Park where you, they, you can get another 100 parking spaces down there if they just put a little pavement in there. I don't know if there's any way to move that forward.
We haven't had much success lately, but we will keep pushing forward with that.
Chief, the Counselor Mark, there's a special session going on today to plug budget holes. I don't think they're looking at adding it.
Yeah, I know. If I can throw out another celestial event, the comet was a big success last month and tomorrow there's a meteor shower. Tomorrow night.
You know, if I could offer Counselor Casper and Counselor Mark this, the whole issue on the composting stuff, a great opportunity for an op-ed article, especially after a newspaper runs an article that kind of gets the folks stoked up in a negative way. A, a nice one to come back to would be an op-ed that kind of pointed out some of the rationale that council went through in approving it to help reinforce that decision. It goes along with Counselor Casper's education thought. But there's nothing that precludes you guys from writing op-eds on the subject. All right, so Mr. Hoagland, Counselor Hoagland, what do you got?
Well, thank you. I would like to thank Rick for that meteor shower, that, or the comet last month, that was fantastic. It was my kids and I and everybody, it told everybody, so it was great, thanks. And I know about the one tomorrow, so thank you. But I would like to thank Diane Kooz for her service. You know, she, she let go today and it was great working with her. And I think husband was elected as well, so they, the first elected couple in our history. I don't know if we've given thank you gifts before to past counselors or if we can, but something light as she's traveling. But a thank you for her from us would be great. That's all I have.
We, we do do a certificate of appreciation, so.
All right, cool.
All right, thank you. And Counselor Parsons?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. First, we have lovely radar speed signs all in certain places in town. I'd like to see us move those around a little more. I think they lose their effect once they're in the same spot for months and months on end. And second is a question of, on Northeast Lane, we put in a roundabout and we put a piece of art on it. A piece of art broke off, part of the piece of art broke off. And I was wondering if we ever planned on reinstalling that? It looks a little shabby at the moment.
I'll follow up on that and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
And where, where was that, Counselor?
It's on Northeast Port Lane.
Oh, Port Lane, okay.
Yes.
Yep, okay, thank you. All right, well, I don't have anything. So again, yeah, thanks to Diane Kooz and her time with us. With that, good as the order, let's call it a night. Thank you. Yep, did it.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, see you.